Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Great. My name is Aisha Paracha-Zacaraya. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. Welcome and thank you for joining us at our Candidates Forum for Palo Alto City Council. A warm welcome to our city council candidates. Thank you for being here and for your readiness to serve our community. I wish you all the best this evening. I'd like to thank the First Congregational Church for cosponsoring this forum and for providing this venue. Tonight's Candidates Forum is also cosponsored by the Palo Alto AAUW branch and the congregation Beth Al. I'd also like to thank the Mid-Penn Media Center, who is reporting tonight's event, and to all League volunteers assisting with the event today. We couldn't do this without their help. I'd like to remind everyone that this event is strictly nonpartisan, and the League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. We do encourage informed and active participation in government, and we work to increase understanding of major policy issues and learn about each candidate and their views, so that voters like you can make informed decisions when you go to vote. Before I hand it off to our wonderful League moderator, Ellen Smith, tonight, who will go over the format and lead us through the event, I want to quickly remind all of you of some of our upcoming election events on pros and cons on the November ballot. So please join us and encourage your friends, family, neighbors to attend. We have flyers out in the front if you'd like to pick some up and take them with you. We also have our pros and cons pamphlets and other materials that are useful when you're making your choices this November. Lastly, please take a minute to silence your phones for the duration of the event. Thank you all for your civic engagement and for attending our event tonight. With that, I'd like to hand it over to our moderator, Ellen Smith. Thank you all for being here.
Okay. Thank you, Aisha, and thank you also all for coming. Tonight, we're going to hear from the five candidates for the Palo Alto City Council. I want to remind you that this year, the number of seats on the Palo Alto Council will go down from nine to seven. So we have three seats that will be filled by three of the five candidates you're hearing from tonight. The candidates are Tom DuBois, Carrie Walbach, Eric Filseth, Patrick Boone, and Allison According to the agreement we have with the candidates, there's no audio or video recording of this program except for what is being done by the Mid-Penn Media Center. We're scheduled to finish by 8:30. And to help keep us on track, we have our timekeepers Nancy Olson and Trina Loverchuk. They will signal candidates with a green sign for one minute, a yellow sign when you have 30 seconds, and the stop sign when you're done. And you may finish your sentence, but then you're done. We'll be taking written questions throughout the forum that allows us to cover as wide a range of issues as possible. Our question collectors are on both sides of the auditorium here, and if you want a card, you hold up your hand. If you have a card to submit, they will pick it up and bring it to our question sorters, who are Sue Hermsen and Daja Phillips. They'll be reviewing the questions and grouping them by topic. And I want to also show you, because she'll be popping up from time to time. Paula Powers is back here. She'll be bringing the questions to me. We'll begin with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, and the candidates have drawn numbers for the order of their speaking from Mr. DuBois to DuBois to format. We'll then have the questions we've collected from the audience, and candidates will be called on in a varying order for each question and have up to one minute to reply. I'll remind you that you can always make a shorter answer, and that might help us to get to more questions. Then we'll have a closing statement for each candidate of one and a half minutes, and the candidates will speak in the reverse order of their opening statements. And we do ask that in the interests of time, and so we can keep this a nonpartisan environment, there be no applause or other demonstrations of support or opposition to candidates or their statements or positions. At the end of the forum, we will thank them all with our applause. And so we'll begin with Mr. DuBois.
Thank you, and thank you to the League for hosting. So my name's Tom DuBois. I grew up in Ohio. I've lived all over the world, and I ended up in Palo Alto about 1995. It's been a pleasure to serve on council for the last four years, and I'm here to ask for your vote for reelection. I wanted to cover a couple of points in my opening statement. You're going to hear a lot about data tonight, and I want to say that data is great for informing decisions, but we're here on council to take legislative action. It's not just about calling balls and strikes, and you should hear about our vision, our values, and our specific policies that we want to enact in the next four years. I also think being on council is being -- part of it's being consistent and sticking to your values. And it's true that in 2014, I think the three incumbents up here all ran on a platform of housing before office, and it's true that's been happening now during the selection season, but it's the votes in between that I think you should focus on. So I think we all prioritize housing, traffic, infrastructure, and our finances. I wanted to quickly cover a few other things that I'd like to get done in the next four years. One is really rebuilding Coverly Community Center. I pushed for this very aggressively. I've met with the entire school board. I've worked with the superintendent, the city manager, and we finally have this process moving forward. We talk about -- I've also been a leader on fiber to the home and getting high-speed broadband out to neighborhoods. We can save Palo Alto residents about $10 million a year. And finally, I think we need to dedicate some of our neighborhood resources, things like Gamble Garden, Winter Lodge, Rinconada Community Garden, as dedicated park space to protect these resources for the long term. So thank you for coming tonight, and I'd look for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Walbach. Can you just turn off the sound? Thank you. Okay. All right. Now, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Corey Walbach. I grew up in Palo Alto. I moved back in my early 30s to help take care of aging parents and ran for city council four years ago at a time when being unabashedly pro-housing was not necessarily the most popular position, but I think that we've really reached a consensus in the community. We've made decisions through our comprehensive plan about how much we want Palo Alto to grow, in what ways, over the next 12 years. The big questions now are, how are we going to do that? What are the details? Where should new housing or what little new job growth we have, where would that go? And how do we make sure that the transportation, the infrastructure, the schools, the parks, everything that goes with that is done in a thoughtful way? I've long advocated for coordinated area plans as a superior alternative to the old planned community planning process. Coordinated area plans put the community at the center of the discussion. We've already begun a process for a coordinated area plan at North Ventura at the Frye's site, because Frye's is going to be leaving. I encourage us to, in addition to Coverly, think carefully about what the future of the Stanford Research Park looks like. We've included in our new comprehensive plan language about exploring housing in the Stanford Research Park, and I'd encourage us all to imagine and then plan for a new neighborhood in Stanford Research Park. And in addition to that, of course, besides housing, transportation, where of course we could talk about either of those all night, I think there are a couple of other things that are very important that we need to be planning for now, specifically on transportation. I'll just mention grade separation and how critical it is to separate our roads from our train for safety and traffic reasons, and to do so in a thoughtful way for our city budget and our neighborhoods. And we also need to start planning now and preparing deeply for sea level rise, so that in 50 or 100 years Palo Alto is not literally underwater. I've also proposed and introduced -- oh, that's it. More later.
You do get to finish your sentence. Could we just do without the times? Just turn it off, please. Yeah, okay. Sorry. Okay, when we're set. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Filseth.
Thank you. Evening. My name's Eric Filseth, and my wife and I have lived in Palo Alto's downtown north neighborhood for 27 years now. We raised two boys who went through the whole Palo Alto school system, Addison, Jordan, and Pally, and then off to college. And I worked for 27 years in the semiconductor industry. I was a vice president at Cadet Design Systems for a while. I was CEO of a smaller company for a number of years. And I ran for council in 2014. And I don't know if you know Nielsen Buchanan, but he's one of my neighbors in downtown north. And I got involved in the parking activism. And what had happened was, in the 2000s, the city had allowed a lot of commercial development downtown that didn't have enough parking for its tenants. And part of that may have been a reaction to, after the dot-com crash, there was actually vacancies downtown, and so I think some of it may have been a correction for that. But of course, the unintended consequences were the neighborhoods surrounding filled up with parked cars. And so I got involved in that, and one thing led to another, and I ran for council in 2014 and was elected. And when I ran, I really had two things that I was focused on. One was land use. I mean, it appeared that a gap had opened up between sort of how City Hall looked at it and how most residents saw it, and parking was part of those. The other one was city finances. And so in the last four years, I think we got some good work done on the land use side. We passed the office growth limits. We passed retail protection. I continue to worry some about finances. I've spent a lot of time on that. So going forward, I think we have really three things that we need to do. One, we need to deal with our housing, traffic, and parking challenges, which are in many ways a consequence of the region's growth. Second, we still need to make some investments in our community, both in infrastructure and amenities and services. And three, we actually have some long-term financial challenges, which are not a crisis today, but if we don't deal with them now, they're going to be a crisis in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Hi. My name is Pat Boone. I'm a city council candidate. Good evening, everybody. I got into this race mainly for one main reason, because I felt city council was disconnected from the residents. They didn't resonate with them as well as they need to be. And I believe that a government needs to be of the people for the people, and I felt that disconnect was in place. And many people told me that I should go for committee or just do this another time, and I just couldn't, because I felt my city that I love, and I've only been here for two years, needed help. And also with that, I'm going to tell you something that you probably don't hear from most politicians or candidates. I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have an answer to a lot of the problems here in Palo Alto. I don't. But you know what? I'll tell you something also, very honestly. Not a lot of candidates or politicians do, not necessarily talking about those here on the dais, but no one really has answers concrete to anything. It's all about how you learn things, comprehend things, and that is a skill that I bring to this opportunity as city council. I spent 25 years as a TV news reporter all across the country, covering news stories for television stations and networks. And throughout that, I had to start my day by understanding a topic and then learning it throughout a day and coming up with hearing both sides throughout a day and having a resolution. And that was day in and day out for 25 years. That type of skill, I think, is needed when you have to have a council member who needs to hit the ground running. Those are the type of skills that you need. We may admit that no one has the perfect answer to anything, but at least I can develop those answers for you. I want to give a new look to city council, because I think it needs it, not only because it's just electing the same old people, but it's time for a change. This is our time now to give that change to city council. What are we waiting for? The moment is now. I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Cormack.
Good evening. My name is Allison Cormack. I want to thank the League for hosting this. It's a pleasure to be in First Congregational Church, where usually when I'm up here, I'm singing. I will spare you that this evening, because I sing in a choir. You really don't want me singing a solo. I've lived in Palo Alto for more than 21 years. My husband and I have raised our two kids, who went all the way through from preschool to Palo Verde, JLS to Gunn, and they're both now in college. I worked on the libraries here in Palo Alto, which you are probably familiar with. Those of you who know that lived here in the early 2000s know it was pretty contentious, and our third try was to bring forward the bond and then the private fundraising. It was a great honor and a privilege to be the chair of the bond and the president of Palo Alto Library Foundation during that time. I should mention that I was not involved in the construction, so if you have questions about that, we can take those later. You really don't want me in charge of building things. I'm better with words and numbers. My professional background includes working on Capitol Hill after college and then business school. After business school, I worked at Hewlett-Packard in finance and sales. Then I was a stay-at-home mom for 10 years, so I bring that perspective and that knowledge of what it's like here during the day, and that was when I did the work on the libraries. When I returned to the paid workforce, I was at Google for almost five years in communications and customer support. And I think, you know, councilmember DuBois mentioned data earlier today. I think the idea of sharing data and being open and transparent is something I bring from my experience at Google. We'll talk this evening about a variety of things that have already been mentioned, housing and traffic and big projects like Coverly and the train crossings, and I look forward to that. But again, it's a pleasure to be here, and I thank you all for coming, because as the League says, democracy is not a spectator sport. So thanks for coming.
Okay. Thank you all. We'll now begin with the questions. The first question is, if you are elected, what is the main change you would like to bring about in Palo Alto? And we'll start with Ms. Cormack.
I only get one?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that can happen more at the council level. I'm certain that can happen more online, whether it's on Town Square, which is anonymous, or Nextdoor. I will tell you where I see it, which is wonderful, is when I'm walking and knocking, which I've been doing since July. I have to tell you, it is heartening every single week to knock on doors of strangers, have them open it, have a conversation. Every single time, you know, I do it a couple hours at a time. I learn something. I meet new people, and I believe that that constructive dialogue will serve us well as we move forward with the challenges we have before us.
Mr. Boone, actually, you're next.
I think one of the first things that I would want to do, since the city council, as we all know, it's a governing body of several people. It's not just one person, even though you're hearing from us all individually. So I think the first thing that we need to do is sit down and figure out a way we're going to work together. We need to figure out how we're going to get along. You know, this council that we currently have, I'm hearing, as I go from door to door rumors, there's a residential list, there's the developer side. I think that we need to figure out a way that we can work together on one diathesis and figure out rules and regulations and measures and procedures that make the lives of everyone in Palo Alto better. That's one of the main things we need to do. We need to get our house in order first before we start going out and talking to other people. We need to make sure that we are a unified group, that we can work together so we can get the job done, because it's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we have to be unified together, no matter our differences. We've got to learn how to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Walbach.
We're out of order. I think that the number-one thing I'd like to see us do better in Palo Alto is fulfill our obligations, to actually follow through on our commitments, whether that's our commitment to add an average of 300 housing units a year, our commitment to protect our community from flooding, our commitment to make sure that we meet our goal of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below our 1990 levels. There are so many things that we have already committed to, which if we do not work very, very hard, we are going to miss. And so I think how we operate as a council, how we coordinate with staff and the community, and the management at the staff level, especially at the top, is going to be critical to fulfilling our obligations.
Thank you. Mr. DuBois.
It's DuBois. And just to check, we skipped councilmember Filseth?
No, we're doing in different order. It's just that I tried to do this so nobody speaks in the same place, and somehow this one looked like you did.
So I really want to see us execute efficiently on our infrastructure plan. We have many very large projects in progress, capital projects, police station, two fire stations, Coverly Community Center, the animal shelter, and then the grade separations, which, you know, the train tracks split Palo Alto. And so these are projects that are going to shape the city for decades. They're all in progress. I really want to see them through, see us do them efficiently, and do them with positive community involvement.
And now, Mr. Filseth.
So I'm inclined to agree on the infrastructure thing in the short term. I think, long term, I think of this as, what's the city's most important problem? And I have come to think it's our finances. And the reason for that is it's not the most urgent thing, but it touches everything that we want to do, and it's something that's we're going to have to spend some serious effort on over many decades. And basically, the issue is that the rapid escalation of construction costs has made it harder and harder for us to build things. And you see that with us right now, as we try to scale back the infrastructure plan and try to raise the hotel tax and so forth. The other one is our long-term pension liabilities have begun to crowd out services in our operating budgets. And the combination of those two things means that we are in for a long period of fiscal squeeze, okay, for many, many years going forward. It's not a crisis, but it's going to get a little worse every year. And if we don't deal with that, the risk is that we're going to leave a city that can't pay its bills without massive cuts of services. And so I think we need to deal with that, and I think it touches everything.
Okay. Next question, on affordable housing. Would you support zoning changes to allow for more housing for low-income as well as for the missing middle? And the question are also asked specifically about the Wilton Court project. And we'll begin this time with Mr. Filseth.
Yeah, I think we're already in the process of making some zoning changes to do that. We have the whole housing plan coming, and we're going to do some things like converting commercial zoning to residential zoning. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm actually very hopeful that we're going to get the Wilton Court project done. I think the, you know, I saw something tremendous a couple of weeks ago. If you went to the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting where the Wilton Court project came, what you would have seen, I was there, the mayor was there, what you would have seen is Palo Alto housing people, the Planning and Transportation Commission, and a whole bunch of neighbors from the Ventura neighborhood, all sort of working together and put their heads together to try to figure out a solution to the problem at work for every -- it's actually one of the most uplifting things I've seen in four years on council. I thought it was great. So I'm optimistic we're going to be able to get that done. There are some things that I hope that we're not going to need to do. I also think that really the answer to this is to spend money. The big challenge with affordable housing isn't zoning per se, it's who's going to pay for it, and I think we need to work on that, too.
Thank you. Mr. DuBois.
So I think, again, part of it, I support below-market rate housing. I've been advocating for the city to set a target for how well percent of its inventory should be affordable. As councilmember Filseth said, part of it's how do we pay for it? And so I think impact fees, particularly on commercial space, is critical. I've supported Buonanvista. I've supported our ADU ordinance, supported our affordable housing overlay. And I support the Wilton Court project. We do have a retail protection ordinance in effect, and there's been some discussion about potentially turning that into more of a community space in that project. But I think kind of what happens on the street level and how that is used is one of the open issues of that project.
Mr. Boone.
I believe that zoning options should be on the table. I do support the Wilton project. Just this past Sunday, I actually was at a community meeting with residents from the Ventura area, and they liked the project as well, but they were not too optimistic when it came to parking and a concern about cars in the area. So I think we need to look into that a lot more. We look at more housing projects. Let's do it, but let's also make sure it makes sense, and we know where to put these cars, we know where to put the outflow, outflow of more additional cars in the area. I think we're going to have to have more residents involved in these projects as they come up. That's going to be vital, because we can't just pop these things up. We've got to make sure every neighbor is okay with this.
Ms. Cormack.
There isn't much disagreement among us about the Wilton Court project. I think it's just regrettable that we haven't built any affordable housing in the city since 2011, the Treehouse project. The question are asked about missing middle. I don't know that we've addressed that or there's yet agreement, enough of a consensus. I think that's an area that's ripe for more discussion, while we're gaining agreement on below-market rate. I think the missing middle up 120%, that's definitely an area where more work needs to be done. Mr. Boone and I were at the same meeting, and it was great to have Palo Alto Housing Corp. there, as well as another board member, really engaging in exactly the kind of constructive dialogue I was mentioning earlier.
Okay. And Mr. Walbach.
So there are three parts to the question, Wilton, Court, below-market rate housing, and missing middle housing. On Wilton Court, I think we're all supportive of seeing some more below-market rate housing in Palo Alto, and so let's, you know, see how we can make sure that project works and it works for the community. On below-market rate housing, we haven't seen a lot of below-market rate projects brought forward for the last several years. And if you talk to nonprofit providers of affordable housing, you know, if they're being honest, they'll tell you it's because they were scared off. They were scared off by what the community did in 2013 rejecting affordable housing. I think it's easy for us to underestimate the lasting impacts of our statements and our actions to discourage affordable housing for years to come, and that's what's happened. So it's important that the mood has shifted. On missing middle housing, it's not just something that should be on the table, it's something that is on the table. I co-authored a legislative package with Adrian Fine and Les Niss last year, where we went through a zoning code and figured out what are all the things that we're doing to discourage missing middle housing and also affordable housing. So we need to make those changes now.
Okay. Thank you. How would you explain the job of a council member to an ignorant newcomer? And we'll begin with Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
You are the council member, not the ignorant newcomer.
Thank you for clearing that one up. She's a kind lady. I think the job of a council member, if I had to explain to anybody, is that it is someone who cares about the residents, who cares about the people within their city. That's the, pretty much, the one sentence that you have to have when you walk into this job. Then you have to have, the next thing is, a person who understands the concerns of those in their city. And then you have to have solutions that can solve those problems of those within the city. I think it's going to be important that you have a council member who has compassion and also, more importantly, willing to listen. And not only listen to the residents, but listen to the workers within the city, many who I've talked to who feel like they're being ignored by many members within the city council, that they haven't visited departments. I talked to the police department today, and they said they haven't had a city council member call them in a long time. It's a shame. We need to have more engagement within our own city, within our own government.
Thank you. Mr. Filseth.
Well, so first of all--
Could you pull the mic a little bit lower? Yeah.
This one's very loud. Okay. So first of all, I think the role of government is, most of us as residents don't want to go fix the potholes in front of our house, don't want to go trim the trees, don't want to change the light bulbs and the streetlights and so forth, and that's why you hire a government to do that kind of thing for you. And so we're part of that government. From a purely technical perspective, really, really, the city is run by the staff. We have a professional staff of almost 1,000 people, actually over 1,000 people in the city, and they actually do the day-to-day work. So the council essentially oversees the staff. We're like the board of directors. The delineation is really that you think of the council as being responsible for vision, policy, and oversight. And so things that are major decisions on the community, things where we have to trade off the impact of one group versus another, really looking at the long term. I think that's the proper role of council.
Thank you. Ms. Cormack.
So sometimes in my house parties, there's a child, someone who's in school, so I'm going to go with a sixth grader, that asked me this question a few weeks ago, and it was a great question, and I think a lot of the parents had the same question. Actually, I explained each week, you have to read, you have to read a lot, and then you have to listen for many, many hours, and then you have to make decisions. So that's actually the work that gets done on Mondays. I think the thing that might not be happening enough is striking a balance between the operational work, which is extensive, and the longer-term projects you've heard mentioned here today. My belief is that council should be striving to create a safe, welcoming city with great public spaces for all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Walbach.
So we're a legislative body, and I think, you know, one of the best descriptions of the job of a legislative body is two things, policy direction and oversight. In policy direction, I would put values, vision, and then the policy that results from those. And under oversight, because-- of the job of a legislative body is two things: policy direction and oversight. In policy direction, I would put values, vision, and then the policy that results from those. And under oversight, because as Eric pointed out, that's really done, the implementation and results you get are really up to staff, but that's where our job in oversight really, really comes into play. Beyond that, I think it's also important to be a facilitator, to bring people together, to be a proactive learner, a careful listener, and now, somebody who can count to five, and as of January, somebody who can count to four. Because at the end of the day, if you can't get something passed by your colleagues, it doesn't matter if you, you know, talk about it till you're blue in the face. Ultimately, you have to be effective at getting the votes to get the policy changes in place.
Thank you. Mr. Dubois.
So I think the first thing is, just a well-run city, as Councilmember Philseth said, so that you don't have to worry about it. So, we keep the lights on, we run the utilities, emergency services, keep the streets paved. But, again, I think a bigger role is really to be a voice for the community, to really advocate for residents. You know, you have people who are working full-time advocating for their particular project, and it can be very difficult for residents and neighbors to really have a presence. So I see that as a large role of a council, of a council member. And then, it really is to lead on initiatives. It's much more than just listening and deciding. Kind of the quasi-judicial part of that role is very small. The bigger part is really kind of figure out how we can lead on initiatives that really help the residents of Palo Alto.
Thank you. We'll get to something more nitty-gritty with this question. What is your approach regarding the railroad rebuilding through Palo Alto? Grade separations, overhead, underground, how would you propose to finance your proposal? And we'll start with Mr. Walbach.
So, there are really two parts to this. What's our vision for what it should look like, and secondly, how do we fund it? I want to emphasize, neither of these are final at this point. You know, I'm just going to give you my best guess and some ideas about where we should look and where we should especially focus. But we are a long way, I think, from making final determinations about either of those. When it comes to what the grade separations look like at our four-ack grade crossings, I think a lot of things are up in the air right now at Palo Alto Avenue because of new, recent news about our tree, about El Palo Alto. At Churchill, I think turning it into a bike and pedestrian underpass like Homer is likely, though not guaranteed. For South Palo Alto, I think that the best option is probably going to be a trench, so that Meadow and Charleston can stay where they are. But there's a lot of things that we need to do to make sure that's possible, including the funding, and of course, the engineering complexities and regulatory permission. When it comes to funding, we'll have to fight hard for every job, or every penny we can get anywhere we can.
Thank you. Ms. Corman.
Let's see. So you heard first from the Chair of the Rail Committee, so that's helpful. I was at the Rail Committee last week, and it is true that the city will not be able to make the decision they were hoping to make by December. If we go, let's go south to north, because I live in South Palo Alto. I agree that the trench is probably the most appropriate thing, given the interest of the neighbors and the number of houses there. And the arguments used by council to take leaving Churchill open, off the table. I'm not yet 100% convinced that we're going to need to close Churchill. That has impacts that we have yet to study in terms of traffic other places. It certainly is a reasonable option. El Palo Alto crossing is much more tricky, as Councilmember Walbach indicated. So I don't know that anyone has a great solution for that. Funding is going to come from a couple of different tranches. One will be Measure B funding, to which we are entitled. One will potentially be a business tax, which is a discussion I can't have in 10 seconds. And now I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Dubois.
Yes, I've been, I was on the Rail Committee for three years. I was the Chair last year. And I was really advocating for an empowered community group. It didn't happen last year, but the council's come around. We formed an Empowered Citizens Group this year. And I think it's really critical. This is a really complicated project that needs deep community involvement. In terms of financing, people have mentioned the sources. We really are going to have to put together a variety of sources. Local funding, probably through a business tax, county funding. I've been talking to Jerry Hill about state funding. San Mateo County has managed to get funding for some of its grade crossings. And it's really kind of an economic powerhouse for the country. I think the peninsula demands funding for this kind of project, not just from our local residents, but from a larger pool of funders.
Mr. Philseth.
So let me start at a really high level, right, which is, you know, I think one of the main stories of the Silicon Valley is that we generate a lot of wealth, and we don't adequately fund the transportation and housing infrastructure investments that is really need to sustain that growth. And those get socialized on the community as a result. And that's, and those get socialized on the community, sorry, and as a result, we scramble for stuff. On rail, I think everybody knows that the right answer, if you were looking at it for the next century, would be to put it in a tunnel from South San Jose to the Transbay Terminal, okay, which would cost $100 billion, and so far, nobody has anywhere near that kind of money identified. So we're going to try to do the best we can in Palo Alto. Within Palo Alto, I think most people would like to see the tracks lowered, below road level, for as much of it as possible. And I think, you know, there may be possible to actually do that in South San Jose. I think one of the things we're grappling with is people worry about a seasoned property in houses. Nobody wants to do that. So I think it's going to be, we're going to fix this in five minutes here.
Thank you. And Mr. Boone.
I think for this, I think we are still trying to come up with ways in which this will make sense. I believe that right now, the trench could be a possibility. There's also a hybrid option out there, which can raise the tracks just slightly. I think this is still being debated about what we need to do for these rails right now. As for closing any arteries, no, absolutely not. That's why we have traffic issues right now. So we don't need to look at anything like that. For funding, this is pretty easy. This is going to have to be a business registry that'll lead into a business tax. We're going to have to need that. We're going to need that. There is no way that voters need to take on this expense. It's going to be quite expensive, and I think our businesses need to chip in. And I think they're ready. We just need to come up with a policy and a way for them to be part of this.
Thank you. Next question. How would you ensure that all areas in the city are equally represented? In the past, the south and southwest areas of Palo Alto have often felt that they are not receiving equal attention for transportation, planning, and other things. And we'll start with Ms. Corman.
So I have some experience with this, because Central Park is my home library, and as everyone knows, there's one library in South Palo Alto and four in North Palo Alto. And I think the answer is citizen engagement and listening. So when I went to council with many friends, some of whom are here this evening, and a thousand signatures, there were people on council who said, "We don't believe that anyone in South Palo Alto actually cares." So it turns out, we actually know the recipe, and whether it's getting improvements on roads, which certainly people in South Palo Alto have done, or libraries, we have the opportunity to do this. And I'm here to tell you that council does listen and staff does listen when you present the information.
Mr. Boone.
I'll come off of that by saying, I agree, the listening is very important, but also doing something about it is also most important. I think that's what residents really want to make sure, that their voices are being heard, but also action is being taken. That is very vital, because we can talk all day, but unless they see something, that's going to be a tangible thing in their communities, they're going to lose their belief in the government that which they elect. So we need to make sure that we bring them all to the table, but we have some real resolutions and some real plans set in place for them. You know, many times, as a journalist, when I've been covering many campaigns, I've always noticed for candidates where they talk and talk and talk to different neighborhoods. And then after the campaign, you don't see them anymore. So I believe that we need to, as council members, continue to have the dialogue. And not just community meetings, but go to houses, knock on doors, as though you're trying to get their vote, because you're trying to understand their concern, and we're trying to have resolutions. So I think we can never, never stop this communication with each and every resident.
Mr. Walbach.
Well, I'm from South Palo Alto. I live in the Palo Verde neighborhood, and I know how important it is to make sure that every neighborhood of Palo Alto is well-represented. One of the first things I did when I joined council was to write a colleague's memo with a couple of my colleagues to establish a neighborhood town hall program. And we put that through the Policy and Services Committee, we adopted it, went through a couple of iterations as a kind of a pilot program for the first couple of years. Staff didn't really invest in it very much. And unfortunately, I think that frankly, the mayors for the last two years have not been committed to the program, nor has the city manager. And we have not had that program implemented for the last two years, which has been, to put it mildly, immensely frustrating for somebody who was the lead author of it.
Mr. Dubois.
Yeah, I think three of, three of the five of us are from South Palo Alto. Lydia Koo is from South Palo Alto. I tend to, I try to look at a system approach, and really what's best for the entire city when we look at decisions. We have made more investments that are geographically spread out, but I think we should also look at kind of demographic, demographically spreading things out. I think we need more senior services, and we need to continue to support La Camita and Avanidas. I've been involved, I've been the liaison to Palo Alto Community Child Care, Toletin Gardens, we funded Buena Vista. And one area I'm really interested in seeing us expand is youth sports, because once you get to high school, most of the sports become cut sports. And I think our teens would really enjoy some intramural or some pickup sports activities. So I really see our role is not just looking at funding geographically across the city, but also for different groups and constituencies.
Thank you. Mr. Philseth.
Yeah, so I agree with a lot of what's been said so far. I think there's a process, and we have to do a good job. I think that's one of our fundamental jobs, is to make sure that we're taking care of the whole community. Usually, this question comes up in connection with the issue of do we need district elections, which is something that they have in larger cities than this. And of course, there's some legal rigor and rule going on in other cities and jurisdictions about that now. I'm not persuaded that we need to go to district elections yet. I think we can, with our size, I think if we do a good job at our core job of being good governance, we can take care of the entire city.
Thank you. And now we get specific again. Concerning the recent bicycle infrastructure construction on Ross Road, what do you think of the final product? And would you support more of this in Palo Alto? And we'll start with Mr. Boone.
At the beginning of my campaign, I had a chance to talk to a lot of residents on Ross Road. And one of the bigger things that I remember hearing over and over again from many residents were, "What's with that roundabout? Oh my goodness, that's a pain in the butt. It's not safe for kids, it's not safe for anybody. Why did the city do this? Oh my God, that makes no sense." This is them, not me, saying it. And I said, you know, "Did you have a chance to be part of the project? Did you have a chance to voice your opinion when this was, before this was put in place?" And many of them told me that they did not have a chance to have a seat at the table when it came to the formation to the bicycle and the speed, and the roundabouts on Ross Road. So I believe that when we do plans like that, we need to put more people involved, especially the people it affects.
Mr. Philseth.
Yeah. So the thing about Ross Road is, I think there's near-universal agreement that the goal for everybody, whether you're for or against it, was to improve safety for bicyclists, and especially kids on bikes. And the dispute, if there is, of which way is safer. And one of the things that I think the city didn't do a good job of is making, is really being able to answer that question. Was it safer the old way, or was it safer the new way? And the new way is very counterintuitive, okay? And we still don't have a, we still don't have a clear answer to that question. Let me contrast it with a project that was done in my neighborhood, where they reconfigured Middlefield Road and between University and Menlo Park. And it was very controversial in my neighborhood, too. Half the neighbors were against it, half the neighbors were for it. But the city had data, right? And after they put in the pilot, you know, they said, "Well, before we put it in, we had eight accidents a year on this stretch of road, and afterward, we had zero." Okay? And at that point, everybody agreed and said, "Okay, let's keep it." And I wish we had done that in Ross Road.
Ms. Corman.
So I live on Ross Road, and I was the first person down to the council to talk to them about what had happened. It's informed my campaign, because I have come up with the questions that I will ask about a project before I vote on it if I'm elected. The first is, what is the objective of this project? Vice Mayor Philseth has indicated one objective, but if you read the staff report, there were actually multiple, and it's not clear which of them was the most important, nor what the data was. The second question, is there a less expensive way we could have accomplished this? I think the answer is yes. I think some speed bumps, possibly the bike lane we all thought we were getting certainly would have been part of it. And the third and most crucial one, does the community know what we are doing and why? And the answer to that was no. It's a longer discussion it has to do with one of my concerns about communication with the city. We were given an opportunity to be at the table, but to be fair, no one said, "This is a $2 million project that's going to change how you use your road."
Mr. Walbach.
So, you asked thoughts on the final product and would I support more. The final product, I think we're continuing to look at tweaks. We did make a change, which I advocated for, which was pulling back the entrance around the Y, the YMCA, which makes it so that cars now don't have to pull as far into the opposite lane, and it's a little bit easier to use. I'm open to additional changes. And this, you know, our experience with this, I think informs how we will do this. Yes, I will support rolling out our bike and pedestrian mastermind. Yes, I support more bike boulevards. Yes, I support more bike and pedestrian safety projects in Palo Alto throughout the city. But four issues that I think came out of this that we should focus on: one, community involvement; two, in this case, staff took options off the table that might have been superior early on, because they thought it would result in neighborhood outcry. Well, we got the neighborhood outcry anyway. Third, did the design, the aesthetic design, really fit that neighborhood? And fourth, why did they start there? Why did we, I should say, start there? There are a lot of other parts of the bike boulevard network that we might have started with and been better off if we'd done that in retrospect.
Mr. Dubois.
Yeah, going last to get to say, I largely agree with a lot of the comments that were made. I just wanted to make three quick points. One, noticing a bike boulevard is much different than a construction project, and the city actually treated it like a construction project. And I think that's something city staff has learned, and they're going to do differently in the future, that, I mean, talking about a roadway that a lot of people use, you really have to notice a lot more people for communication. The second thing is, we're looking for a new Director of Traffic. The previous one was not a traffic engineer, and I think there were some, the actual design that was overly aggressive, and we have modified it and changed it, and pulled some things back, including the roundabout, as well as the Y entrance. And the third thing is, we, our new city manager's a traffic engineer, so I think he's going to be very sensitive to this going forward. And we've already started marking out road changes with hay bales and things before we start construction, to give even more time for community feedback, as they experience what it's going to be like after the changes.
There's been the recent climate change reports indicating a potential crisis ahead of us. How high a priority is climate protection for the City of Palo Alto and for you, and what concrete actions are feasible for Palo Alto? And start with Mr. Philseth.
Well, so the city has adopted a plan to reduce emissions by 80% over 1990 levels by the year 2030, and we're something like two-thirds of the way through there. And so I think we need to continue to move down that path. The biggest remaining sources of emissions in the city are transportation and gas. And I think the push to encourage the conversion of natural gas functions to electricity makes a lot of sense. Here in Palo Alto, our electricity is 100% renewable at this point, and I think that's something that everybody should be proud of, and most of us are, and we all are, right? So I think we should proceed down that path. There are a number of smaller things we can do. We just did an anti-idling ordinance, for example, and that should make a little difference and so forth. One of the ones that we need to deal with along that is that one of the biggest impacts is sea level rise. And I think we really need to worry about that out in the baylands. So I don't think we should be building out in the baylands, and we need to take some steps to protect some of the stuff that's there already, such as a water treatment plant and so forth.
Thank you. Mr. Dubois.
Yeah, we passed a pretty comprehensive sustainability plan that we need to continue to implement. You know, sea level rise is obviously a very difficult problem. We need to work together with other cities in the Bay Area. We have kind of natural levees in our baylands, and we need to continue to protect. We've done some non-obvious things. I authored a memo to transfer a very small portion of our water- I authored a memo to transfer a very small portion of our water allocation to East Palo Alto, who was looking at significant groundwater pumping, which would have caused saltwater intrusion potentially even into Palo Alto. So rather than have them pump groundwater, we transferred a very small part of our allocation. And I think the last one, which Councilmember Philsett said, is really limiting our investment in areas that are protected to be underwater.
Thank you. Mr. DeBois.
I think this is a very important topic that not only something that Palo Alto needs to think about, but also the entire Bay Area, in fact, the entire state and certainly the entire country. This is something that on the federal level, that to me, it's being ignored. I think in the state of California, obviously the governor has made a lot of changes to help with emissions and carbon footprint. So it's a very important topic to talk about, but it is not something that Palo Alto can do on its own. We can do our part. And I think that's when it comes into how we drive and how we don't drive as much. We have to go upon, upon our own way to do what we can to pull down the carbon footprint. I agree about limiting any additional building where there may be a rising sea. But I think this is something that we're going to have to work with other cities and work with the state to keep down these emissions. Because this is going to become a serious problem, but this is not going to be part of a debate question. It's going to be part of our livelihood and whether or not we exist. It's a very important topic and I don't think that it's something that should be just easily brushed off.
Ms. Kromak.
Thank you for this question, whoever wrote it. It has come up less often in these forums than I certainly would have expected, you know, given what we're experiencing in the world. And frankly, I would add it to the long-term problems that Vice Mayor Philsett, you know, outlined earlier this evening. In terms of, you know, climate protection, which the question, a few things that haven't yet been discussed would be having a robust shuttle system. This would help with traffic and parking and other things. It also comes out of my experience with Ross Road. A neighbor said, "What if they'd taken that $2 million and actually given us buses to get around town?" And then the, the, you know, if you look at page 14 of the Sustainability Climate Implementation Plan, I think it's called now, Action Plan, the big, the big changes will come from utilities, right? Converting natural gas, as Vice Mayor Philsett said, converting vehicles coming into the community and vehicles that are here to electric vehicles. Those are concrete actions we could take to encourage more.
Mr. Waldo.
We can think of the work we need to do in, when it comes to climate change, in three areas. Mitigation, adaptation, and litigation. There's been a lot of discussion about the adaptation and the mitigation. I think I agree with everything that was said. So I'll just mention something about where we're going to pay, where we're going to get the money to pay for the adaptation that we're going to have to do. It's going to be dramatic. This is, you know, climate change is a, and both mitigation, you know, reducing our greenhouse gas impacts and preparing for sea level rise and other impacts of climate change, this is a huge collective action problem. I often say it's kind of like the housing crisis, where like, we're not going to solve it on our own, but we've got to focus on a lot and we need to work very collaboratively. The fossil fuel industry has known for decades what they were going to do. We've started, and I was happy to lead the charge, to divest, begin the process of divesting Palo Alto from fossil fuels, so that now when we, as a city, as a region, as a country, whatever, go after the fossil fuel industry, we won't be going after ourselves too. But they're going to need to pay for this.
Thank you. There's a lot of talk about using data to solve problems. Does Palo Alto have the staff, the expertise to collect and analyze all the data that's required for this process? We'll start with Mr. Waldo.
No.
Yes, that's all you have?
Well, look, our, our city staff right now, at the mid and high levels, looks like Swiss cheese. It's, it's atrocious. You know, part of it, we can lay at the feet of the housing crisis, right? And every employer manager, I talked earlier today, I think a couple of you were too, about the FBI and the, you know, special agent in charge for the San Francisco office was talking about how hard it is to recruit and retain employees in this area. And it affects every government agency, just like every private sector or nonprofit operation. But no, I think it's been demonstrated through a number of examples, most notably perhaps the, the disaster of the Business Registry or alongside that, the residential permit parking program, that our city staff needs a lot of work and we need to do a much better job when we, when we contract out.
Ms. Kromak.
Also no, but that's partially the fault of the council. Those of you who watch, and I know many of you here watch, hear every Monday evening requests for more and more information. So I was just making a short list of things that I would prioritize having staff spend time on. One is certainly the business tax registry and then evolving into a business tax. Before we do anything there, we're going to need some more information. And certainly the train crossings, I think is probably the biggest one on the list. I will give you an example. There is no staff person at the city who is fully responsible for the real project. Even before the chief transportation official left, that responsibility was split among multiple people. So, you know, we learned our lesson from the library construction when it was split across multiple people and that didn't go particularly well. That was only one contributing factor. But this is a major, major project and so I think having one person in charge is going to help us gather the data we need for that crucial project and a few others, but they should be limited. You know, no more than five, hopefully, that we can ask them to work on.
Thank you. Mr. DeBois.
Yeah, I think data can help inform our decisions. You know, I, I work at Google and there, there are new data sources kind of every day that we could be using. But we have to avoid kind of analysis paralysis, right? You can always ask for more information, but at some point you need to make a decision. I think one thing council needs to do is kind of agree to what the facts are, kind of agree to what we know, what we don't know. And the methods used to collect data is really important. There's a big difference between a statistically representative survey and just a, an email-based opt-in survey. So for me, I, I prefer fact-based decisions rather than kind of wishful thinking about kind of unproven ideas. I tend to lean towards moderation. When I hear kind of go big without data behind it, I start to get nervous.
Mr. Philsett.
That's kind of a broad question, I think. Do we, do we have enough data, right? We got a lot of data, so I think as, as Councilmember DeBois sort of said, you know, a lot of it's how we use our data as well, as opposed to just massing it. A couple of observations, I think, you know, we're in an, an age in which some of our resources are really scarce. We've got a lot of growth in this area, but there's going to be more land and so we have a big choice on how we allocate things. And so people brought up the Business Registry and the Parking Program and I think it makes sense, right? And if we're going to allocate parking to the communities serving businesses, service workers at Channing House or something like that, we got to know who they are first, right? So I think there's some of that concern. I'm actually kind of optimistic. There's some, some interesting new sources of data that I think we're really going to be able to use. So cellphone data to look at traffic patterns, for example. I mean, you know, previous generations haven't had access to that kind of thing. So I think we're going to, I think we're going to get some good stuff in the future on this too.
And Mr. Boon.
This is an interesting question because it's something that a couple of neighbors and I were talking about over the weekend. And one of the things that they told me, they said, "You know, why doesn't that city council spend so much money on consultants and, and gets all this data? And then they get more data and it spends extra money and they're just wasting the city's money over and over time with so much extra data without any action." So I think data could be a possibility for us to make positive decisions for the future. But we have to make sure that we are getting what we need versus asking for new and new and new and new and new. And we need to have actions from that data. So I believe we need to stop wasting the city's money when it comes to unneeded data and the same old data, revising a plan and get data on that plan. We need to make positive, the, the correct decision first and then we make, then we get the data request after that versus data request, data request, data request.
Thank you. What do you think is the right jobs-to-housing ratio and how would we get there? I'll start with Ms. Kromak.
Uh, let's see. It depends if you're, if you're doing the jobs to employed residents or jobs to residents, whether it's the five or the three. You know, we happen to live at the epicenter of the economic engine, one of the economic engines for the planet. So I think it will be difficult in this community to build enough housing to ever get to, to something that's closer to two to one or one to one, whatever, whatever number you think might be ideal for you. And let's just establish that it might be different for different people. And the second part of the question was...
How would you get there?
How would you get there? Well, you know, probably slowly and carefully. I, I think it's un, it's unlikely that we will build enough housing in the short run to make a very big change in that. But I am glad that the community is spending more time talking about the housing side than the development side. I think looking at the implications of decisions that prior councils have made is a really healthy thing for us to be doing.
Mr. Boon.
I look at a, a one-to-one and I believe that what we're going to have to do to get there is that we're going to have to slow down a little commercial growth, a little bit, to get to the housing aspect. We're going to have to bring it down, I wouldn't say to a halt, but we've got to slow it down. And then we've got to bring up housing projects that make sense. Not only affordable housing projects, but other housing projects out there, VMRs. We have to make sure that we're making some smarter decisions when we're moving ahead and then look at everyone individually versus having just a prospect of a generic goal. But let's have individual goals, one by one by one, so we can hit everyone correctly. But I believe that we have to just take it project by project, project by project. But I believe the bigger asset of getting there is that we're going to have to slow down commercial growth just a little bit to get to that point.
Mr. DeBois.
So I don't know what the jobs-housing ratio should be, but I know it should be lower. You know, we're a real outlier. I think our current run rate is at something like 3.5. Jobs to employed residents, you know, the average over time has been lower. We're a very attractive place to work and we have these huge employers in Facebook and Google and Apple that are very, very concentrated. So it's kind of a first-world problem, but I really think we need to encourage these large employers to spread out around the Bay. The East Bay could really use some, some intense job centers. Google's, has a big project at the Durden Station in San Jose, which, San Jose has a below 1.0, I think, jobs-to-housing ratio. So I really think, and, and part of our focus on commercial growth has really been trying to shift that equation. I think another thing we can do is redefine our mixed-use zones to be residential and retail and not create additional office space.
Mr. Waldo.
As a region, it's very simple, it should be one-to-one, right? For, there should be a place for everybody who works in this region to live in this region. And the fact that we don't have that housing in the region is why traffic is atrocious. That's why apartments are so atrociously expensive, why people compete, sometimes with people who get paid a lot of money, you know, so even upper-middle-class people now in Palo Alto are priced out. So they go to another community that used to be more affordable or into older units in Palo Alto that used to be more affordable. Those prices then go up and then people get displaced from there and go further and further afield. So what you see, you know, going out from Palo Alto and from San Francisco in particular are these ripples of displacement. So how do we solve it? One, slow down job growth regionally, including Palo Alto. We've done that, I think, more in Palo Alto than other cities. We've had a lot of debates about the best way to do it, I think we've landed in a good place. And then we have to add a lot more housing. We've decided how much we're going to add in Palo Alto. And when it comes, I actually really appreciate Tom's point. I actually, you know, introduced the legislation with, with Adrian to have ground floor retail with residential above. We can't just talk about this stuff, we need to move it forward.
And Mr. Philsett.
Well, I think it's important to take a look at sort of now versus the future. The old compact is that, has been, that, you know, industry brings in jobs and economic growth and cities implement infrastructure. And the challenges in Silicon Valley, I mean, I mean, we're way out of scale. I mean, we've got five jobs for every, for every dwelling unit created and we're just, I mean, we're like these shale gas guys in North Dakota, okay? But it, it may not be that way in 20 or 30 years. So I think the time context is important, right? Fundamentally, I think from a regional perspective, it's an economic issue. So the Santa Clara Grand Jury Report says you could solve the whole thing for $30 billion, okay? Everybody could have an apartment for $3 billion. You know, that's a lot of money, but at the same time, you know, the market cap of Silicon Valley is greater than most sovereign nations on this planet. I mean, we have the money to do this, okay? So from a narrower local perspective, I think you've got to look at marginal versus existing. Marginal, I think we ought to be shooting for one-to-one. And I think, you know, things like our, our office limits, Mountain Dew's headcount tax and so forth are things that go that direction.
Kind of a follow-on to that. How can we maintain a reasonable balance between high-tech firms and traditional small businesses that seem to be getting priced out of our city? And start with Mr. Boon.
Question again, could you ask that again, please?
How can we maintain a reasonable balance between high-tech firms and traditional small businesses that are now getting priced out of the city?
Well, I think first of all, we need to get an idea of what businesses are in the city. And I think that's what a Business Registry will do. We need to get an idea, who's, who's here. As we're getting priced out of the city, I think the high-tech firms understand that we have a growth cap in place, so it's only so much that they can do. We need to make sure that there is code enforcement in place to make sure they're not packing more people in there than they need to be. Because we don't want to have an issue where we have overpopulated buildings, you know, we have a density issue. As for the smaller companies or smaller businesses, I think we need to support them as much as we possibly can. I think that's going to be vital. I think the good old days of making sure we take care of the mom-and-pop organizations and the smaller groups is very important. And I think that's, should be a purpose of the council, not something that we oversee or forget about. Always think about the smaller businesses. It's vitally important.
Mr. Philsett.
Well, I think that, yeah, the, the current economics of tech and to some extent healthcare put a huge pressure on everybody else that wants to land. And so what you've seen in Palo Alto is some government intervention, which is what the retail protection ordinance does in order to stop that from impacting our community. You know, long-term, I think this will probably settle down, okay? I think we are in somewhat of a transitory situation right now. I doubt that this is going to be a problem 20 years from now, but it is today and that's, and that's why we've acted. In the long-term, I actually think the industry rush to Durden Station makes a lot of sense for the region. And, you know, there's good transportation there, lower-cost housing that they've worked for and so forth. Google's, Google's led the charge down there. I think that's actually part of the solution. And I think in the long-term, it'll settle down. But at the moment, yeah. And, and I'm a long-term corporate guy, okay? But I think a little bit of government intervention, like the retail protection ordinance and potential and some other things is, is what's called for right now. Maybe not in the long run.
Ms. Kromak.
So one of the things that hasn't been discussed yet is the shift over the past couple of years from, if you think about the high-technology firms like Hewlett Packard, we're selling things to the, the organizations that are now selling more services. The same thing is happening on the small business side, right? A shift from where we buy things, whether it's Palo Alto toy and sport, to buying a service, whether that's, you know, the nail salons or the restaurants, et cetera. So that shift is happening not just in our own community, but all over the country. And that's one thing to keep in mind. It, it means we need to broaden our understanding of what a small business is and what a retail business is. So as we see that shift, I don't know how much local government can do to protect or stop it, but it's important for us to understand that residents are asking for, for different things and the community, the business community is providing more services as opposed to things. Need to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Mr. Waldo.
Yeah, so I think just like in trying to encourage housing, especially affordable housing or missing middle housing, the real question is, what kind of incentive structure do we create? Because, right, we're not going to build or we're not going to start small businesses ourselves, but what kind of incentive structure can we create in the environment to spur and encourage what we want to see more of? So there are a few things, a couple we've done, a couple we could do. One, a headcount tax. I think we would probably mostly agree that we should move forward with the headcount tax. 2020 seems like a good year to do it. You know, high turnout, good year for, for tax measures. We should probably exempt small businesses and have it be graduated, depending on the size of the company. Secondly, our retail preservation ordinance. Third, exempting small offices from our annual office cap, which we've done, our limit on chain stores on California Avenue. And I'd also say, you know, as we're looking at coordinated area plans, especially if there's any business involved in those, we should stipulate that that's an expectation, that office space there should be exclusively for small businesses.
Yeah, I think, you know, venture-funded, high-tech startups can outbid small businesses every time. And so, you know, what can we do about it? I think the council can do quite a bit, actually. You know, I kind, I object to kind of turning our downtown into a large private campus. The city, it's only within the city's rights to zone for things like private dining rooms, which we're, we're grounded... which we're ground-for-retail. We need to protect our neighborhood's commercial zoning, which is meant for neighborhood-serving businesses. And that includes, to me, small medicals, psychologists, dentists. And then finally, it comes down to code enforcement. So we actually do have a lot of ordinances that would help regulate this, and we've been challenged to enforce those. We recently lost a staff member. We need to restaff our code enforcement division.
What can Palo Alto do to advance gender equality? And I'll start with Mr. Walbach.
Thank you. So right after the 2016 election, when a lot of people were really scared, a couple of my colleagues and I, including former Mayor Burt, who I see in the audience, brought forward a resolution saying that not only does Palo Alto reject bigotry, but we're going to work proactively to ensure that the rights of everybody in Palo Alto are protected, regardless of gender, gender identity, immigration status, et cetera, and identified several at-risk communities. I've been working, you know, going back to this question of what is the job of a council member? Part of it, I mentioned, is facilitation. I've been, you know, perhaps with others as well, but I've been working with people from the community, especially from the UN Association and others who are interested in seeing Palo Alto become a city for SEDO. That's the Convention for the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. I think a couple members of the council are not enthusiastic about actually implementing that and doing a gender analysis in Palo Alto. We were talking about it just last week. It's going to be important when that comes to policy and services that we push to actually do a proper gender analysis, look in the mirror and figure out what we can do better as a city for our employees and for our residents.
Okay, sorry, I lost track of my... Ms. Corbin.
Besides elect me? Okay, sorry. So the city of Los Angeles has done some studies on this already, and what was interesting was hearing Mayor Garstecki talk about the, what they learned and then what they changed. And I'll give you an example, which was middle-school athletic programs. So when the city of Los Angeles undertook this program, which is a version of what Councilmember Walbach is describing, they realized they were spending more money on boys' programs than girls' programs, and they fixed that. So that's one thing we can absolutely do. We should be paying attention to that, whether it's middle-school athletics or the adult education programs. Another thing, and this is one that's become more important to me as I've gotten older, is parental leave. So currently, there is no maternity policy, and there's actually no paternity policy in the city of Palo Alto. It's coming forward, they're working on it, but to me, it is just, it's unimaginable. When I first learned this, when I was running, I was incredibly surprised. So there's a long list of things that we can do to make sure that, you know, women and girls are equally represented.
Mr. DeBois.
So I am enthusiastic about SEDO, I was glad that that finally came to council. We've gotten rescheduled multiple times. And I don't think it's just gender equality, I mean, I fully support LGBTQ equality in general. I think the city can act as a model employer, and one thing we talked about, was it last year? Was things like maternity leave, which some public agencies don't offer, and frankly, the city of Palo Alto doesn't offer right now. So we're actively looking into those things. And then I think in general, we just need to be vigilant for sources of bias, whether they're conscious or unconscious. And I think actually training, again, for like city employees to be more aware of perhaps unconscious biases that creep into the workplace.
Mr. Philson.
Yeah, I think that, I think that we're hitting most of the major points here. I mean, the council, the Human Relations Commission took up the issue of SEDO, which is, it's a subset of, nominally a subset of the council, which we looked at and passed part of last week. As far as direct control is concerned, we have some control over the city's staff. We don't have a lot of control over sort of other companies that work in the city, but we can model the right behaviors on the city's staff, both through processes and training. And I think that parental leave issue is an example of that, and I think we need to continue doing that.
Mr. Boies.
I think for this one, not only does it need to be an importance on gender equality, there are also economic equality, also racial equality. I know how we can fix one of them, elect me to council. And that is that we need to shake up council to have a different look and a different perspective. Many times, and if you look at different governments in different states and even our Congress, you may sit back and wonder, how in the heck is that representation representing America? And we need to look at that. And as I look out at this room and many rooms that I've been in throughout this campaign, I have seen a lot of America, a lot of diversity. It's here within the community. But when we look at council, we don't see enough of it. So it is time that we make these bold steps to move up and get new faces and new diversity. We speak it, but are we doing it? We need to do it.
So that we can wrap up on time, this is going to be our last question. What would you imagine the city of Palo Alto might be like 50 years from now? What would be its focus? And who will live here? And we'll give you a few seconds to collect your thoughts, and we'll start with Mr. Philson.
I think it's going to be a moderate density, relatively low-rise kind of suburban environment like it is today. I think things are going to be different. I think transportation's going to be different. I think technology's going to be different. But I think it's going to be families with kids in the schools and seniors, and pretty much like it is today. I mean, that's what I hope. I hope this is going to continue to be a really nice place to live and raise kids and grow old in security, right? I think we will still not be Atherton, but neither will we be downtown San Francisco either. I think we're going to be that balance that we've got right now, if we do our job here.
Mr. DeBois.
So 50 years from now, hopefully the train will be underground. I think we'll continue to lead the country in clean energy. Hopefully, we'll have the highest percentage of autonomous electric cars in the country. But I agree, I think what we want to be, or what I like to see us be, is a great place to live, to raise a family, and to retire. I expect we'll see changes in downtown and Cal Ave, but hopefully, a large part of the city, the residential area, won't look a lot different than it does now. But we'll be leveraging technology, a smart grid, and we'll just be better connected through technology.
Thank you, Mr. Boies.
Well, one good thing, Trump won't be president, so that'll be very happy for all of us during that time. Let's hope not. I hope. And I think that what's going to, what I've visioned for Palo Alto during that time, sometime from now, 50 years or whatever period of time it will be, is that I think we're going to have better transportation options. I think I see this city being able to get around a lot easier and a lot smoother. I envision a time when El Camino Real will be smooth as butter, and I envision a time in which we will have affordable housing for everybody, and there will be real affordable housing, real BMRs, where people can afford it, not just for people who make $400,000 a year. And I envision a time where there's happiness and there's euphoric atmosphere among the city council. I believe that this could happen, but we have to make the diversion into that direction. If we just continue to do the same-old, same-old, we're not going to be much different than we are right now. We've got to make some bold choices, and to get to that point, we need to get to this point.
Ms. Corbin.
So I've always joked that 50 years from now, if I'm still here, which is questionable but possible, that someone's going to come to me and say, will you sign on to endorse the next library bond? Because we've got to rebuild them again. So I've always looked out 50 years. You know, our open spaces will be more precious to us, to all of us, because there probably will be more people, and they're probably, it probably will be hotter, there'll be more air conditioning. I hope, I hope we have the wonderful transportation options that people have described. I hope that parts of our city aren't underwater, but, you know, you're going, you need to expect the people who get elected and all of us to participate in making sure that happens. I hope that Palo Alto is still a welcoming place, right? A place where we want people to come from all over the world, and I'm confident that education will continue to be, you know, a value that all of us share, real lifelong education. Yeah, I hope it's wonderful, and I'm committed to making sure that I do my part.
Mr. Walbach.
Sustainable, equitable, and with a world-class bureaucracy, a government that we can be proud of at all levels. Look, I'm not very hopeful, the way some things are going, but there's a very old saying, I wish I could remember the source, "It is not necessary to hope in order to persevere." And the challenges we are facing globally, nationally, and locally are so severe that we have no choice but to persevere. If we are able to get through this difficult time, here are some things I'd love to see. An intergenerational community with all ages and all incomes being welcomed and able to stay here, better transportation, which is easier to get around safely and conveniently, a couple of new neighborhoods, like the Stanford Research Park and the Stanford Shopping Center, and a little more density in downtown and Cal Ave, zero greenhouse gas emissions, protection from sea level rise, more green roofs, and maybe a little more fun.
Thank you. We'll now have the closing statements by each candidate. A reminder that each candidate has one and a half minutes, and we will do it in the reverse order of the opening statements, so we begin with Ms. Corbin.
One of the things we haven't had a chance to talk about tonight, and I often try to do this in smaller events, is talk about why we love living in Palo Alto, what brought us here, what keeps us here, what makes this place so special. Education, certainly my own, and that of my children, is what brought me here. That continued because I have a demonstrated track record of bringing this city together on a contentious issue and actually solving a problem. I'm incredibly proud of the work that so many people did on that. Further, my experience with that and then my experience with, my professional experience on communication, I think comes at the right time. We are having difficulties in this community and within the nation communicating, so I believe that my experience and my skills are things I could bring to the council, and I ask for your vote on November 6.
Mr. Boies.
I'm a renter, and one of the things that I like to bring to council are protecting all the residents, obviously, but also making sure that we look out for the renters in this community. There are a lot of them, and there's more coming maybe. So we need to make sure that there are policies in place in which they won't lose their home, much like the resident hotel president. My campaign, as I started to say at the beginning of this whole evening, is that it's a total grassroots. Right now in the bank, I have just under $1,000, much different than those who are at the table than I. And at any given time, you all can give me some of your campaign money, can make a donation tonight if you choose, because you have more than enough for this race of five people, in my opinion. I don't think you need a lot of money to win this race, I think you need a lot of heart. I think you need to be a real person who resonates and understands and listens to the residents here in Palo Alto. It is time that we have a brand-new perspective on council that gets you. It's your time. We have to make these bold decisions, and I think we can make it now. I think we can make it with this name, Pat Boies, on the ballot. On the first day, as I'm sworn in, I'm ready to serve you, you, the people.
Thank you. Mr. Philson.
Yeah, so thank you very much. So first, I want to say, for me, this is, this is all about Palo Alto, okay? I'm not interested in the second career in politics or anything like this. I'm doing this because I live here. Judge Cordell last week had some lovely remarks about that. But after, after this is all over with, I'm just going to be another resident. And so I started, I started having this right-brain, left-brain thing, sort of the resident brain and the candidate brain. As a resident, you know, I think we've got some significant challenges ahead, and I want the best possible council we can possibly have, okay? The wisest, most responsible, least rash, most qualified, most talented council we can possibly get, because I'm planning on living here a long time after my term expires. As a candidate, okay, I think I've learned a bunch of things that will make me more effective. I mean, the pension stuff took me two years to figure out, right, to like, so I'm proud of a lot of the work that we did, some wasn't easy, but I did what I said, and I didn't say one thing and do something different, or the reverse, I'm a whizzy-wig kind of guy, right? What you see is what you get. I've worked with everybody on council, and as a manager, I always felt my job was to get the best possible contribution from everybody, because everybody's got something to contribute. And the councilman and committee chair, I've tried to work that way, and even people that disagree with me, I think would say that. I think I've done some good work in the last four years, and if you agree, I would love the privilege of serving you for another four. Thank you for coming tonight and listening to us and for caring about the future of Palo Alto.
Mr. Walbach.
I want to thank the League for hosting this and everybody for coming out tonight. Before I forget, I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, Anna Eschew, Joe Semidian, Jerry Hill, and some people who work for the city who keep us safe, our firefighters and our police officers have both endorsed me. Our police have endorsed me even though I say that Black Lives Matter, even though I spearheaded a privacy initiative that makes their job harder. I think it's important to elect people who are able to work with anyone, even when you disagree. I would appreciate your vote. You can learn a lot more about me on my website, you can reach out to me anytime. I've had people who don't agree with me on every issue say that they appreciate that I'm perhaps the most accessible member of the city council and willing to actually take time to sit down, hear from people, learn, admit when I'm wrong, and figure out how we can learn from each other going forward. Our issues in Palo Alto are huge. If we put our brain power together, if we put our heads together, I think we can solve some of these tough challenges.
Thank you. And Mr. DeBois.
Yeah, overall, we have a fantastic city. We get a lot of things right, but we definitely have some challenges ahead of us. How do we have sustainable growth without overwhelming our infrastructure, our school system? So I tune pretty straightforward. I say, I say what I'm going to do, and I do what I say. I'm proud of my voting record, so I've voted for nearly every housing project that came to council the last four years. Voted for advanced renter protections, slowed commuter growth as well as pushed commuter parking out of neighborhoods through RPPs. We minimize a lot of exceptions on commercial projects, including minimizing PC zoning to put on moratorium. We restarted and completed our comp plan in three years by forming a dedicated citizens' community, and it done quite a bit for the environment as well. So I've been too endorsed by Joe Semidian, Anna Eschew, Ladoris Cordell, Sierra Club, The Daily Post. My finger crossed for the Weekly this Friday, hopefully. Lots of mayors, council members, the entire school board, but most importantly to me, I've been endorsed by a lot of residents and neighborhood leaders in Palo Alto. So I'm eager to continue to serve the community. You can get more information at votedeboys.com, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto and our cosponsoring organizations, the First Congregation Church, which has provided us with this great space, Congregation Beth Ann and the Palo Alto Branch AAW, I want to thank the candidates, all of you, for caring enough about our city to run for office. I don't know how many of you have lived in other places, but we are blessed with the people who are interested in serving and caring about our communities. You may have no idea. And I want to thank also all the League of Women Voters volunteers who've helped to make this forum possible. And finally, I want to thank you, the audience, for being so attentive, for giving us more questions than we could ask. I want to remind you to vote on or before November 6. Encourage your family, your friends, your neighbors, anybody you talk to. Every vote counts, it's up to us. Thank you.